We call this regular meeting of your city council to order. Would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call. Please start voting. Kristi?
We have a quorum with seven councillors present.
Thank you, Kristi. Next up is agenda approval. Kristi, do we have any changes to the agenda?
If not, Mayor, I'll make the motion. We prove the agenda is presented.
We'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. We have two cards today. We have Mr. Ron Brink. Thank you for being here, Mr. Brink. Would you identify yourself and give us your address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Citizen Council, thank you. My name is Ron Brink, Alamosa. I just want to point out a few things that I'm sure everybody's thought about based on the cell tower. I, myself, have one sentence about it. No more cell towers. There's lots of chico, grounded edge, if they could go, and...
There you go.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. I didn't know that. They also affect a huge area around them. You know, wherever one's put up, you just end up with a large area on the ground that's affected by a cell tower, or any tower as far as that goes. And if they do want to come into the city, I think that they should be encased in rock or bricks or something that's more feasible to the eye than just that ladder works. So, that's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. You obviously know that we're going to be discussing a couple of cell tower issues this evening. Thank you. Next up is Mr. Jared Smith.
My name is Jared Smith, and actually do not live inside the city limits. I have property just outside. I've owned it for four years, and I pay taxes, so I think... I'm a disabled veteran who requires the assistance of my service animal, and I come to speak before you tonight in attempt to raise awareness and education. Without getting into specifics, I was recently denied access to a local facility on the account of my service animal. This is a violation of both federal and state law. After attempting to correct this with the owners unsuccessfully, I sought the assistance of various city and county offices. Following the disinformation, I spoke with my veteran services officer, who was less than helpful, and suggested I contact the DA's office. When I spoke to the clerk at the DA's, she clearly had no idea what she was speaking of and rudely announced, "We only handle criminal matters here," before hanging up the phone. I also went there in person, and once she realized I was the same person from the day before she became defensive, I spoke with the inspector before leaving, and his response was, "We don't do that here. We don't work for you." And that's kind of odd, being a public office. You're employees of the public. Furthermore, being a state law, it is enforced in the judicial court. Completely the responsibility of the DA's office. And the interference of an assistance animal or handler is a misdemeanor under state law, but I digress. Truly, my intentions here are not to be confrontational, but I sincerely hope that all this illustrates the point that ignorance creates or provokes confrontation. It also leaves the victim little recourse except for to call the local authorities. The odd thing is, is I placed a call inquiring as to making a police report and a complaint, and I've yet to receive a call back as they were unsure who would enforce the law, and this was well over a week ago. I hope this is disturbing to you, as it is to me. It is my highest hopes that everyone can learn from this situation and prevent it in the future. I believe education is what is necessary, and I urge you to make efforts to this effect. With veterans representing nearly 10 percent of the county's population and a disabled population of at least 15 percent, I hope that you can see where it's not just proper prudence, but the right thing to do in an effort to protect such a large portion of our public. I would be happy to speak with any of you privately in more detail. I do thank you for your time and your time and attention to these matters.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We appreciate your presence. Staff, is there any follow-up to anything that we heard this evening? No? Thank you.
I'd like to make some comments, Mayor.
Absolutely.
I think we need to address this issue. It's, you know, and I don't know, did you call our police department?
Yeah, I was just concerned the people who called, the ones who were most knowledgeable and most helpful.
Great.
And it was also the city clerks that were the most competent and most helpful. But they just...
Well, I appreciate that because that is so important, you know. You've served our country, and now we need to find ways how to help our veterans that are coming home, you know, and whatever we can do, we'll be there to support you 100 percent. I'm a veteran myself, so when I hear stuff like this, it does bother me. It bothers me a lot, you know, and people, some people can just be so irresponsible. You know, that's totally wrong. So, whatever we can do, and I'm glad to hear that at least our staff and our departments are really knowledgeable and they're willing to help, that sends a good message to all of us, you know.
Yes, sir. And the ones who are most knowledgeable and most patient.
Exactly.
And the ones who are most competent.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you, Council Gregor. Next up, we have a ceremonial item, National Health Care Week proclamation, 2014, presented to Valleywide Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Philip Mendoza. And I will, is Dr. Mendoza here? Thank you. I will read this, and then we will come down and present this to you, if that's okay. National Health Center Week proclamation, 2014, celebrating America's health centers, local engines for healthier communities. This is a fairly long one, so sit back and relax. Whereas for nearly 50 years, America's community health centers have provided high-quality, cost-effective, and accessible primary and preventative care to all individuals regardless of insurance status or ability to pay. Whereas health centers serve as the health care home for over 22 million Americans through more than 9,000 delivery sites across the nation, one in every 15 people living in the United States depends on their services. And whereas health care centers are located in medically underserved areas and locally controlled by patient majority boards, making each health center responsive to the needs of the specific community it serves. Whereas as locally owned and operated small businesses, health centers serve as critical economic engines helping to power local economies by generating billions of dollars in combined economic impact and creating jobs in some of the country's most economically deprived communities. Whereas health care centers employ more than 9,500 physicians and more than 6,300 nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, and certified nurse midwives, along with social workers, case managers, and community health workers as part of a multidisciplinary clinical team designed to treat the whole patient, coordinating care and managing chronic disease at the same time reducing unnecessary, unaffordable, or avoidable and wasteful use of human resources. And whereas the health care center module continues to provide or prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to access, including geographically, income, and insurance status, and in doing so improves health care outcomes and reduces health care costs, system costs. Whereas health centers save the entire health system approximately $24 billion annually by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of costlier health care settings. And whereas health care centers have worked tirelessly to grow the nation's primary care infrastructure to meet the pressing needs of Americans who lack access to primary care services, a number that exceeds 62 million nationwide. And whereas the demand for health centers continues to outpace growth and expansion of the program, the expansion of the program will be essential to meet the needs of these new patients as existing health centers are already at capacity and many communities lack any primary care services at all. Whereas health centers remain committed to preserving and expanding access in the communities they serve, ensuring that the promise of coverage is translated into the reality of care. Whereas the National Health Care Center offers the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, their dedicated staff, board members, and all those responsible for the continued success and growth of the program. Since its creation almost 50 years ago, during this National Health Care Week, Center Week, we recognize the significant contributions of America's health centers in their vital role as local engines for healthier communities and a healthier America. Now, therefore, I, Joseph P. Lucero, Mayor of Alamosa, on behalf of your Alamosa City Council, do hereby proclaim August 10th through 16th as National Health Center Week. I encourage every American to visit their local health center and celebrate the important partnership between America's health centers and the communities they serve. I will sign this and ask council to join me to present this to Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you very much. I'll pay recognition. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your handwork. Right, Robert. So, thank you. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. 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 Thank you, council.
Those are some of the fun things that we get to do as a city council. Proclamations are wonderful. Next up is Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, under Consent Calendar A, we have approval of minutes for the regular meeting, July 16th, 2014. The approval of the minutes for a special meeting, July 30th, 2014.
If there's no discussion, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, start voting.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next up is regular business. Business brought forward by city staff. First up is Public Works. Viero Wireless requests for permitted use by special review lots 18 through 20 Lakewood subdivision Railroad Avenue. We will have Pat and Eric present this, and then we will allow Mr. Gonzalez, I believe, from Viero to follow up. Thank you for being here, Pat.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This permitted use by special review proposed by Viero Wireless is for a 120-foot tall open lattice-style tower to be located in the Y between Highway 285 and Railroad Avenue. For a little background or road map as to how we got to where we're at, the original staff recommendation to the planning commission regarding this matter was recommended for denial based on five different criteria related to the proposed installation. The five criteria were that the applicant claimed that they had analytical and quantifiable data that required the facility be located at this location to optimize their cellular coverage, yet no outside studies or information of this effect had been provided to substantiate their claim. Numerous vacant properties exist in the immediate vicinity of the proposed tower location that would effectively move the proposed facility from the middle of an identified city gateway. No evidence had been submitted that would indicate that any effort by the applicant had been made to contact these owners, nor have they provided any reasons why such nearby property would not be acceptable. The improvement of gateway corridors in our community was specifically identified as an action item by city council in our most recent mission statement. Staff felt that the approval of this facility would be in direct opposition to this statement and contrary to council's vision for the future development and appearance of our city. And although the property is zoned commercial business and this use is allowed by special review, the area to the north of the proposed facility is predominantly residential. Section 21, 118A of the Alamosa City Code of Ordinances states that no special review use application shall be approved unless the approving agency finds that the application is designed to be compatible with surrounding land uses and the area of its location. After some consideration, staff did not feel that the proposed facility was compatible with existing land uses. An existing C dot, and finally, an existing C dot tower is in use only 600 feet southwest of the proposed location, and no evidence had been submitted by the applicant to indicate that any efforts at co-location had been attempted. At the planning commission meeting, I've got a frog. At the planning commission meeting, the applicant questioned the applicability and relevance of the criteria used to base the recommendation for denial since they were not specifically called out in our current zoning ordinance. Not every use can fit neatly within an ordinance, hence the requirement for permitted use by special review. This process allows a city to consider special uses which may be essential or desirable to a particular neighborhood but are not allowed as a matter of right within a certain zoning district. Its intent is to permit flexibility within a zoning ordinance and also enables a municipality to control certain uses that it feels could have detrimental effects on the community or the neighborhood. It is one area of the zoning ordinance that allows a governing body some freedoms and value judgments in making its decisions. In addition, each of these criteria can be found as requirements to an application and/or as parts of zoning ordinances in other municipalities. So, for these reasons, I would argue that the concepts and the contents in the original recommendation for denial are indeed applicable and relevant. In making this recommendation to planning commission, it was never staff's intent to limit cellular or data service available to the residents of Alamosa and the surrounding area, nor was it staff's intent to limit fair and meaningful competition in this business sector. It was simply felt that there existed enough vacant land in the immediate area of the proposed installation that, if used, would alleviate the negative aesthetic impacts on our southern gateway that would be unavoidable at the proposed location. In 2011, council created a mission statement that includes action items specific to the areas of economic development, aesthetics, environmental responsibility, and community. The first two action items as related to the area of aesthetics are, one, to improve gateway corridors into our community, and, two, to work with local groups to beautify corridors, improve cleanliness, enhance public areas, and provide open space and parks for resident and visitor enjoyment. With these considerations in mind, after the public hearing and the presentation by the applicant, the planning commission ultimately felt that the proposed project would be in direct opposition to council's vision as communicated in the mission statement and recommended denial of the proposal.
Thank you, Pat. Council, does anyone have questions? Or Pat? I do. Counselor Hill?
Pat, can you give me a brief history on the tower that Viero put up on the west end of town? As I was not part of the council at that time, I didn't, can you give me the history on that?
Eric can probably address that better than I can. I wasn't heavily involved.
I wasn't heavily involved either, but I was involved, and as I recall, what took place at the Viero Tower on the west end of town was a similar application was made for a lattice tower roughly at that location, and I can't recall what the planning commission recommendation was, but city council did not like that site and either had a formal or an informal vote to deny that, and then Viero worked with city staff and came up with ways to ameliorate some of council's concerns, which were primarily at that point aesthetic concerns, and those involved making sure that the, that building that you see there, Viero's building, was put on the site so that it kind of screens the tower a little bit. The tower turned into what you see now, which is the monopole rather than the lattice tower design. Those were the major issues, and with those changes, council approved that tower. One of the other issues was the, there was not, for whatever reason, real strong evidence in the record that would have supported a denial. It was more council's desire to deny. And so, the way that the written decision got made left us with some question about how defensible a denial would be if it were challenged in court. So, there was give and take on both sides that resulted in that tower the way it was. And let me just, I'll jump in and make a comment about the process tonight. So, our use by special review ordinance provides that a public hearing is held in front of the planning commission, and then the issue is brought to council. This isn't a public hearing that council holds, but certainly it behooves council, I think, to hear from at least representative of Viero, who I understand is here tonight. And then council has to issue a written decision within 30 days of this meeting. So, I would think that the most effective way to go about that is to hear the presentation tonight, and if you feel like you can make a decision tonight, that's great. State what that decision would be and the reasons for it, and direct staff to come back to you with a proposed written decision that you can consider at your next meeting.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Counselor Hill. Counselor Gregor?
I had a couple of questions for Pat. You listed several items for reason of denial. Has Viero presented any kind of evidence to any one of those points that you made so far?
Not substantive evidence, in my opinion. They've provided, they provided a drawing with some circles on it saying that these are where our study says the towers have to be. They haven't provided any proof that they've contacted any landowners outside of the gateway. They, they, they did, I'm sorry, they did say that they had contacted C dot, and then that wouldn't work for them.
Thank you.
Counselor, there is a written response from Viero in your packet as well. Letter dated July 18 of 2014.
Thank you, Counselor Gregor. Counselor?
Pat, I wanted to ask you, has this group provided you with any alternative to the design of a lattice tower, of being erected at all?
They have not.
Okay. Has any communication moved forward in that direction at all?
No, it hasn't.
Do you feel that they may want to proceed in that way, or you're just, from your past dealings?
It's certainly an option. They've made those, they've made those considerations for us in the past, and they may very well do it now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Hill?
This question is for Eric. I don't know if I ask you this now or during the, later during the meeting, but you just mentioned that with the tower on the west side, how you had some questions that if it were, if it were denied, how that could be challenged in court, maybe? Could a denial in this case also be challenged in court and cause us to overturn it or change our minds?
Well, any action taken, whether it's approval or denial, can be challenged in court by an interested party under the terms of the ordinance and under Colorado statute. So, whatever you do, you're always open to some challenge. My comment was that because of the way the prior one had gone, any defense to such a challenge could have been problematic. So, is there a defense to such a challenge, whether for approval or denial here? Well, we know a little bit more about what we should do going about it, so hopefully we won't have that problem.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. I'd like to chime in. I was here during the initial denial and then acceptance of the application by Viero, and there were some contingencies made, if I remember correctly. Initially, it was denied because of the placement of the tower in the open lattice. We felt at that time that it was too close to the road, and I think Viero came back with alternatives to the open lattice with the monopole that is there at this point in time. But I think what I remember more than anything else was the fact that they were going to build an office there to partially hide the monopole design as well as having some full-time employees at that site. And I think at that point in time, council of the mindset of economic development and full-time employees looked at that, and I think that was probably one of the things that swayed me and probably swayed council to accept that design. What we have now, though, is we've got, we've got another 120-foot tower on the south side that is in plain view of anyone coming in on 285. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I find that troublesome, especially with the mindset that we are trying to improve the entrance corridors into our city. That is something that is troublesome. But anyway, Pat, thank you for that. Any other questions of Pat? Eric, did you have anything else to add? Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for being here.
Mayor, councilors, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to our presentation and hear what we have to say about our application. I wanted to start off by addressing a couple of comments that Pat made and also to answer some of your direct comments or your direct questions. I was very involved in the initial application for the Viero store and also the tower that went along with it. And that is correct, that when we first made the application, the proposal was for a lattice open-style-type tower and along with the retail store to go in front of it. I don't think, however, that the actual location of the tower changed much from the original presentation until what was eventually approved. The big concession that we made was to go from the open lattice tower to the monopole, and we did that as a compromise to lessen the visual impact of the tower to motorists driving in from the west end of Alamosa. And also, one of the things that I think that the city council wasn't aware of when the first application came through was what the store was going to look like. So, when we came back the second time and asked for the reconsideration, we brought pictures of similar facilities that we had built in other parts of Colorado and also in Nebraska. And so, they got a better understanding of what the building was going to look like. I think there was some concern... to look like. I think there was some concern that maybe what we were planning was, you know, moving in a couple of double wides and building a wooden ramp up to the front door and hoping that that was going to be acceptable. I think once city council saw that we were committed to providing a first-class facility there, and also that we... I think the mayor is correct in that we were going to be providing some full-time jobs, that the council looked upon that request pretty... very favorably and approved the request on the second time around. What I'd like to do is, so that all of you have a good understanding of what our proposal is and why we think it should be approved, I want to kind of walk through what our proposal is, why I believe that it meets the criteria for approval, and also to address the comments that city staff, Pat, had presented to you. And I think this is really what it boils down to is a difference of opinion. I've had a good working relationship with Don Koscland, who was the previous director of Public Works. And I look forward to having a good working relationship with Pat as we move forward, because frankly, Viero is very high on Alamosa. This is an important area to us, and we want to make sure that Alamosa has first-class, world-class telecommunications coverage in the town. And that is part of the reason why we're looking at this particular application. So let me move forward with that. The president of our company has also come out and said that this is an important area. And really, as far as Viero is concerned, what we really want to do is we want to provide world-class telecommunications in non-metropolitan areas such as Alamosa that rival what you would see and get in areas like Pueblo, Colorado Springs, Denver, along the Front Range. And that's what is driving this need for us to provide towers and additional coverage and capacity in the area. And as I go through my presentation, I think you'll understand that. And if I go through something and I don't say something that makes sense to you, which I've been known to do, feel free to interrupt me and ask me a question. I'm happy to go back and explain myself a little bit better. Just so that everyone understands exactly the location of the proposed tower, this is a blow-up of the survey that shows the three lots that we have under contract. We are under contract with the Zerby Law Firm and two other individuals that own Lot 20. The Zerby Law Firm owns lots 18 and 19. 18 and 19 are the lower two lots. Lot number 20 is the top one. This site is located on Railroad Avenue between the intersection of Railroad Avenue and 285 and 11th Street, on the west side of the street. Across Railroad Avenue, you have railroad property where the actual railroad runs through that portion. There's another platted right-of-way for a road that's not yet built. And then on the other side of that is a residential area that is zoned residential that exists over to the west of it. Immediately north is actually a vacant lot. Lot number 21 is vacant. There is nothing on that lot. And then Lot 22 and 23 has a residence on it where the person that lives there, the family that lives there, lives there and also, from what I understand, does a little bit of auto repair work as well. To the south, we have a retail store, an old retail store that's boarded up. Across the alley to the west is a vacant lot, and you can see that as Lot Number 7. On the other side of Lot Number 7, on its immediate west border, is 285. And then on the other side of that is also more area that is commercial and industrial in nature. If you were to look at the current zoning map, we are in a zoned CB, commercial business. And the edge of that commercial zone is Railroad Avenue. Everything from Railroad Avenue essentially to the west and south to the city limit line and then north a number of blocks is zoned CB, commercial business. And it just so happens that we also have a couple of homes between this site and 11th Street that are in that same CB zone. And I believe that the reason that that occurred is that those homes were built in the 20s and 30s and were probably in place before you actually even had zoning in Alamosa. This is a photo that shows you the existing condition of the lot. Right now, what we have on that lot is, quite frankly, a blighted site. We have a partially torn-down home that all that remains is portions of the foundation and some of the slab that was there. We've got weeds, trees, all kinds of debris. This particular photo here is taken from roughly where the tower center would be facing northeast. And you can see that red truck in the distance, and behind that is a brown building. That's the residential home that we're talking about that Pat had mentioned that he feels is not... that this site is not compatible with that particular house. When you look over to the right, you'll see Railroad Avenue, is that gray strip going through there. And then where the telephone poles, that's the railroad right-of-way and the property owned by the railroad. This particular shot is taken facing roughly southwest. Across the street, you can see the tower from CDOT that's on the other side of the commercial building. You can get a little bit more of a view of the vacant lot on the other side of the alley from our site and the weeds and the general condition of the lot. I didn't feel like you needed to see more than that, but I think these two are pretty representative of what the lot looks like today. Obviously, it was taken during the winter time, but it's pretty much in that condition today. So what is our proposal? We're asking for 120-foot-tall, self-supported lattice-type tower and the related improvements that are associated with that tower. And those consist of a 9-by-17 equipment building. These equipment buildings are pre-manufactured. They are... They have a terracotta finish on them, and they come out as one big unit. We basically build the foundation for it, bolt it onto the foundation, and it sits in place. In addition to that, we provide a 1,000-gallon propane tank that fuels our emergency generator. The purpose for this is that we want to have this tower up as long and as often as we can. Our internal goal for all of our towers is that they be up 99.999% of the time. In order for that to happen, when we have periodic disturbances in electrical source, the emergency generator automatically kicks on and uses the propane to fuel it. So it's not dependent on the electric grid. These things come on automatically. There isn't a lag. If the sensors detect a decrease in the amount of electricity coming into the site, they automatically kick on. The only other time that the emergency generator kicks on is that occasionally it will come on in a test mode, which we can control from Fort Morgan. And that's typically done in the middle of the day for about five or 10 minutes and might occur half a dozen times a year, just to make sure that everything's functioning properly. And we make sure that if there is a power outage, that we can continue providing service in the area. All of these improvements will be enclosed by a chain-link fence with security fence with barbed wire on top with one gate providing access onto Railroad Avenue, not from the alley but from Railroad Avenue at an existing curb cut. In addition to the equipment that we plan on putting on the tower, we do design these towers to be capable of co-location with other carriers. So I've been told that we can accommodate up to two additional carriers and their equipment on the site or on the tower. And a lot of that has to do with the structural capacity of the tower. And so depending on what kind of equipment they want to have and where they want to locate it on the tower, that determines how much we can actually put on there. But typically, we can accommodate probably up to two additional carriers at this one particular site with a tower at this height and with this type.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's a carrier?
Carrier would be like AT&amp;T, Verizon. Viero is a carrier. We provide... We're carriers of spectrum so that folks can make phone calls.
So Verizon could get on your tower and use it as well?
If it happened to be in a location that they wanted to be in and we could come to terms, absolutely. We offer co-location to all carriers. If we can come to terms, it's just like anything else, you know, an office building offers an office space for lease. And if you can come to terms, it's obviously it's available for lease. And so that's the situation that we have with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to kind of give you an idea of what this might look like, this is a copy or this is a photo of a tower that we built in Sterling, Colorado. That tower there is an open-style lattice tower that has one antenna array on the top and a number of microwave dishes. That's about what we're going to be looking at at this location. It'll be something that looks somewhat similar to this. And as you can see, this tower happens to be in a residential neighborhood as well. Towers do and can exist in residential neighborhoods without any adverse effects. So let's look at the application that we made and how... What the zoning code says that we have to take a look at. So when I made the original application, one of the things that I wanted to express to you is that I didn't just kind of walk in here and just put an application together and slap it on Pat's desk and go, "Here you go. Prove this for me." Six months ago, I met with Don Koscland, gave him a call and said, "Hey, I've been given a search ring to provide a tower in the southwest part of town. I've got a willing landowner at a location that's in a zone that allows a cell tower to be built, subject to a special review, and I was wondering if I could get your opinion on it." And I actually came down here, met with Pat, drove him to the site. We took a look at it. I had pictures and showed him what we were looking to do in a similar sort of way. And frankly, asked him, I said, "Do you see any significant problems with this particular site?" He said, "I don't see any. You need to make your application so that we can run it through the process and see how it goes, but I don't see any significant roadblocks." And so I took that as, okay, I think I'm in a position to move forward. And the reason I did that is because I worked, again, I've had two towers here in Alamosa approved, the one at the retail store and also the one on the far west end, or excuse me, far east end of 6th Street on the railroad property. And I worked very closely with Pat and tried to come up with something that would be acceptable to Viero and be acceptable to the town. And if you were... If any of you were in town when we did the Railroad Avenue at the site, you realize that I came in and made an application right next to the depot, not realizing what kind of a hornet's nest I was going to stir up with that. And we came... And Pat was one of the ones that... Or excuse me, Don was one of the ones that said, "You know, you probably ought to talk to the railroad." And ended up talking to them, and we ended up finding a site that made sense for both Viero, the city, and the railroad. And so that's what we've got out there today. So I was continuing that kind of a relationship, moving forward. And so... And I knew that Pat... Or excuse me, that Don was getting ready to retire.
Excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
You kept on saying, "Pat."
I know.
So that's kind of... You know, when we're looking over at Pat, he says, "Well, we've never had that conversation."
Okay. I'm sorry. I'll try and make sure I keep saying it right. But in any case, so the special review criteria that's found in your zoning code, one of the first question it asks is, "Does this application comply with all the requirements imposed in the article?" And what I would tell you is that, yes, it does. We meet all the setback requirements. We meet or exceed any of the measurable requirements that are imposed in that particular zone for this particular site. So from my standpoint, we meet criteria number one. From criteria number two is, is it consistent with the objectives and the purposes of the chapter? The proposed tower is a permitted use within this CB, subject to a special review. So yes, I believe that that meets that criteria as well. The third one is, is the project designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses in the area of its location. This is where Pat and I have a difference of opinion. I look at this and I see, okay, not only do we have the surrounding area to the north, to the west, and to the south, all zoned CB, you essentially also have the railroad property that's immediately to the east, which is not zoned, but is essentially an industrial use. So this property is surrounded by, excuse me, commercial uses to the northwest, to the west, to the south, and industrial use to the east. We do have a residential use to the north, but that residential use is almost... You could almost say it's a mixed use in that if there are car repair going on at that location, it's kind of a mixed-use site as well. The original homes, as I had mentioned before, were all built prior to the zoning being imposed in the city of Alamosa. The proposed facility is also a low-impact use. Once this tower is up and operational, this tower will generate approximately 10 trips per year, not per day, not per hour, but per year. We're going to come out about once a month or maybe once every other month to make adjustments to equipment in the tower or to just frankly, just maintain and keep the weeds down. That's about all we're going to be doing at that site. We'll be coming in off a railroad avenue. We won't be coming in off the alleys. We won't be coming in between accessing the site from between the residents and the site. And in addition to that, the tower is... Will not be lit. We've already gotten our FAA approval. They've taken a look at this. They took a long, hard look at it. Took almost six months to get approved. But when the approval came back, it came back as not requiring an additional light on top. So really, the only light that's going to be on this tower will be at the front door of our equipment building facing Railroad Avenue. The tower doesn't produce any obnoxious odors, any excessive noise, or any hazardous conditions of any sort. So this is what I would consider a transitional use between the more intense uses that you see to the south and to the west and to the north, between that and the residential use. This is a quiet neighbor that is not going to be disturbing to anybody that happens to be living nearby. To kind of drive this point home, the other thing you need to keep taking into consideration is, in a CB zone, what are some of the uses that are allowed by right? In other words, these can be uses that can go in on this particular site without very little review and cannot be stopped. And so some of the ones that can be, there's a very long list of them, but I just pulled out some of the ones that might be most impactful: hotel or motel, personal services, retail stores, grocery and convenience stores, bar or restaurant, fast food, restaurant with a drive-thru. All of these are permitted uses in a CB zone. I would venture to guess that all of these types of uses would have more of an impact on a residence to the north than a cell tower that is not manned, does not require water, sewer. All it needs is electricity and some routine maintenance from time to time. In addressing the staff memo from Pat that we received a week before Planning Commission, when we had made the application, I didn't anticipate that there would be any significant issues that needed to be addressed before we went to Planning Commission. This letter came to us about a week before Planning Commission, and I put together a response that... The letter's in your packet. I disagree with Pat. I believe it is a substantive response to the concerns that he had. And I think it's important that you... That I go over those responses as well. So one of the first things that he said was, "Prove that the tower must be at this location." Well, we need this tower at this location to provide in-building coverage. And what in-building coverage is, is that as people become more and more used to using their cell phones, and it's not just their cell phones also, it's also tablets and it's also other devices that connect to the internet. What we've... What the industry averages turned out to be is that about two-thirds of all cellphone... Let's just call them phone calls, for lack of a better term. All of those occur indoors, two-thirds. And because RF is such a weak force, it doesn't penetrate well into buildings. And in order to provide in-building coverage, we have to provide towers that are close to where people are using them. So this is the reason why we've got a tower that is close to the downtown area, to the residences to the east, to the businesses that are to the west. I also, for Planning Commission, provided a copy of the search ring that I was given to... That showed... That basically is generated by our company that is given to me that says, "This is the area where we need you to be." And within that search ring, they usually put a crosshair and say, "Gee, if everything was perfect, this is where we'd love to have a tower. This would be the perfect location for us." Now, granted, these search rings are generated by engineers that are sitting in an office looking at Google Earth and have no idea what it looks like in real life in Alamosa or any other place. And so they don't look at zoning. They don't look at any of that kind of thing. So those search rings are given to me, and then I'm the one who searches and filters out through the zoning and all the other requirements, the local requirements, to come up with a potential site. I provided that to Planning Commission to show them that not only was the proposed tower inside the search ring is also very close to the ideal location that our RF engineers wanted me to be at. wanted me to be at. I don't have a copy, or I don't have a slide of the search ring, but if you'd like to see it, I do have a hard copy that I could show you. Now, this map here is a little bit complicated, and let me see if I can walk you through it. You see the three, or excuse me, the four red symbols there? Those are the, the center of those symbols are where we have existing towers or cell sites. The one on the far left is the one at the retail store. The next one into the right is at the hospital, and that's a, that's a cell site, not a cell tower. It's mounted on the building. The one to the right of that is the existing tower that we talked about at the end of Sixth Street, and at the top of the page, that one is our Alamosa, our first tower that we put in, that's north of town on Highway 17. What you see there is, the green, the dark green, is what we consider adequate in-building coverage. And so you can see that as we start getting close to the downtown area of Alamosa, we don't have adequate in-building coverage for the downtown area, or to the residential areas to the south and to the east of Alamosa. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to plug that hole. And one of the reasons that we, this came to our attention is basically, we get complaints from customers, and when they start complaining about, "Hey, I can't make a phone call here. I can't make a phone call there. I'm getting dropped calls all the time on this street." That all gets plugged in, and all of a sudden, we start realizing we've got a problem, and we go to solve that problem. So this is how we come to solve the problem. This next slide shows that, that fifth site, sitting there at the bottom. And as you can see, this is exactly where the proposed tower is. Fills in very nicely between the, the two towers at the very bottom, and I'm going to toggle back and forth so you can kind of see the difference between the two. This gives us a lot of good in-building coverage, and it also, if you can look to the bottom of the page, where we start getting into what we consider adequate outdoor coverage, and the blue, which is variable, which means that sometimes we get good indoor coverage, sometimes we don't, look at the difference between that. As we start pushing south, we start getting better coverage for our customers and potential customers. And so I wanted to show you, so you could see the difference between that, between those two, between the before and after. Now, part of what, one of the comments that Pat had made at planning commission was that it would be better if this site was maybe quarter mile to the east, or to the west, just away from the gateway corridor. So we had our engineers say, "Well, what would it look like if we moved it a little bit further to the west?" And as you can see, I'm going to toggle back between the current position and this hypothetical location, and you can see that we start losing in-building coverage for a significant portion of the residents in the southwest part, southeast part of town. What we are finding is, as we go into the 4G coverage, and 4G, just the G just stands for generation, it just means this is the latest and greatest reiteration of, of cell coverage. When we start going into 4G coverage, what we've found is that people use their 4G more, more often, and more intensely. And so as we add coverage, what we're finding is people are using it. So let's move on, and I'll get, I'll get into that a little bit later down in, in my presentation. One of the other issues that Pat brought up was, for recommending denial, was that we didn't prove that the location must be at this, the tower must be at this location. We don't only need this, this particular tower for coverage, we also need it for capacity. Now, there's, there's an important difference between coverage and capacity. Coverage is essentially, how far away from a tower can I be and still get, have the ability to make a phone call, or the ability to connect to the internet? That's coverage. That means that I might be able to have a handset eight, 10, 12 miles away, and I might have two bars, I might be able to make a phone call, I might be able to connect to the internet, but maybe the connection speeds are real slow, or maybe I get, all circuits are busy, which I'm sure everybody in here has heard that on their cellphone at one point or another, or, or you just flat out get a busy signal when you shouldn't be able to get a busy signal. Those are all symptoms that the, that the, the towers in that area have approached capacity. And what we're finding is that as people buy, trade in their old flip phones, and buy that iPhone and the Samsung phones, and start using them, they put a tremendous strain on our ability to provide service. If you can imagine, a cell tower only has so much ability to process information. It's like if you've got a fire hose that's this big, and you're pushing water through it, once it gets to as much water as you can push through that fire hose, you can't put anymore in. And that's what's ended up happening, is we are starting to run into a situation where we've got the coverage. Somebody can look at their cellphone and see they've got four bars, but they can't make a phone call, or they can't maintain a phone call. That's a capacity issue. And so the second reason for this tower to be where it's at is also to provide capacity to offload some of that load that the other existing towers are having trouble dealing with, and have it run through this particular tower. This has been, again, an explosion because of the use of smartphones. To give you an idea of how bad, or how good, if you're in the cell, cell business, it is, sometime this year, we will have passed having the total number of cellular connected devices in the world, total number of those devices will exceed the total number of people on the planet. We have about 7 billion people on the planet, and we have more than 7 billion phones out there. And so this is a problem that we, not only is the US experiencing, it's being experienced worldwide. And this is part of the, the move into the 21st century, and, and why it's so important that we be able to have the ability to not only provide coverage, but also provide capacity. Because as we sell more and more smartphones, and sell more and more tablets, and more and more other devices, including, if you've been watching the news, there are internet-connected cars that are coming out now, that will be connecting to cell towers as they drive down the street so that they can provide turn-by-turn instructions and other things. Those are, those are the issues that we're going to be running into. All right, so I talked about all of that. Now, this slide here is just to kind of give you an idea of what's happening in Alamosa. This is voice usage. Now, keep in mind that as smartphones have become more and more common, the voice usage actually is nationwide, has kind of leveled out. In other words, people aren't talking as much, and, which is a bad thing for cell towers in that a voice call does not use nearly as much data as a connection to the internet for data. And so what ends up happening is, as people start using their phones less, and text more, send emails more, instant message more, it puts a bigger strain on, on the infrastructure. This is just the usage in Alamosa for voice from 2012 to 2014. And you can see, this is a pretty steep curve. The industry experts are predicting that this curve is not going to flatten out anytime soon, probably not in our lifetimes, that as these, as these devices become more and more common, it's going to put more and more demand and strain on the existing infrastructure. Now, this is just voice usage. This is data usage. And you can see in 2012, we didn't have 4G out here, or it was just starting, and so it was virtually unused. Look at the, how steep that curve is, much steeper if you were to draw a straight line from center line to center line, much steeper than the voice data.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this for Viero users, or?
This is our, our network in Alamosa. That's the only information that we have available to us. We don't know what the other carriers are experiencing.
Thank you.
My, my, my guess is that the other carriers are seeing the exact same thing that we're seeing, is, which is essentially an explosion in data use across their networks. And we will not be the only ones coming before you asking for new towers. I can guarantee you. So let me continue on with the, the memo from city staff. One of the other things they asked for was prove that this is the only location where this site will work. This is the one site within the search ring that I could find that was, that was listed as for sale. I did contact another half dozen or so property owners in the area, asking them if they were interested. For various reasons, those other potential sites were eliminated as candidates, and actually, one of the candidates was the city of Alamosa. When I met with Don, he had mentioned that the city had some space south of town that might accommodate a tower. We went and looked at it. It was too far outside the search ring, so I had to rule it out. One of the other things that Pat asked was that we prove that colocation was not possible on the CDOT tower. The CDOT tower is 85 feet tall, already has eight antennas that I could see from the photograph that I took, and five microwave dishes, a couple of them actually quite large. When you look at, where could we actually put an antenna array that would actually have to go around the entire structure at CDOT? We would be essentially about 25, 30, maybe 35 feet above ground. Essentially, non-effective site. If we were to put an antenna array at that, we might have an effective use of maybe just a block or two. It wouldn't be worth our time, and it wouldn't be there, worth their trouble. In addition to the, the CDOT antenna, or excuse me, the CDOT tower appears to be fairly flimsy, 4G equipment is fairly heavy, and I'm not even sure that structurally, they would be able to support us. But really, because of the fact that it is so low to the ground, as far as the, the available space, it's just not a viable site for us. And, and one of the other things I'd like to point out, too, is that in your city code, there is nothing in there that says that we have to consider colocation. There is nothing in there that says that we have to eliminate all possible other sites before settling in on one site. There is nothing in there that, that says those things. And frankly, holding cell towers to that kind of a standard would be like if Dairy Queen wanted to come in here, and you said, "Whoa, we'd love to have a Dairy Queen in here. Have you looked at every single site in a CB zone where you could possibly be, and is this the only place that you could be?" I don't think that's fair to Dairy Queen. I don't think it's fair to us. City staff also recommended that denial, because the application was not compatible with the city's vision statement, specifically the Gateway Corridor Initiative, or a portion of the, of the, of the mission statement. And I do need to point out that when planning commission recommended denial, their primary reason for recommending denial was this Gateway Corridor portion of the vision statement of, of the city. And so what I thought what we should do is, as opposed to just looking at one portion of it, let's look at it as an entirety, in its entirety, and more in a, in a solid way, a comprehensive way. That's the vision statement, and you've seen it, it's on your website. Basically, what I did was, not every one of the vision statements and focus areas applies to a cell tower, but what I did was, I pulled out the ones that do, and wanted to see how we stacked up to them. Economic development. One of the focus areas was attract, retain, and expand job opportunities. If you don't have robust telecommunications, wireless communications, you're not going to attract state-of-the-art businesses, and you're not going to keep businesses here. If they can't have high-speed internet access, they are not going to be creating new jobs. They will not be expanding their businesses, and they basically will not be meeting this one particular objective of yours, stated objective of yours. Cement our role as a tourist stop. Wireless connectivity encourages tourists to look for attractions in the area. When you get a tourist here, the first thing they're going to do is they're going to Google whatever. Whatever it is that they're looking for, they're going to want to know where is it at. And if you don't have the ability to meet that demand, they're going to go to the next place it does. Provide infrastructure to sustain a vibrant community. This proposed tower is going to not only provide the ability for us to put antennas on it, it will produce the ability for others to put antennas, possibly two more carriers at the same location. Aesthetics. Improve the gateway corridors. Nowhere in there did I see anything that said anything about prohibiting, prohibiting towers from the gateway corridors. Every single gateway corridor that you have coming into the city has at least one tower, if not more, that leads into the town. This is a fact of life in the 21st century. We're, what we're proposing is that this site will clean up a, a blighted and vacant lot at your southern corridor. We're going to remove those weeds, we're going to remove those scraggly trees, we're going to move that, what the remains of that building that was, that was torn down some time ago, and put a brand-new facility that's actually going to be maintained on a regular Environmental responsibility. Utilize green technology where practical. Wireless communication is green technology. It allows businesses and government to be more efficient and reduce, by reducing unnecessary trips and paperwork. Work to reduce crime and create a safe environment for residents and visitors. Improve capacity to communicate during community-wide emergencies is one of the reasons why we are putting this tower in. This is going to add additional capacity to handle high volume, a higher volume of calls in that area. So this helps with that portion of it, as well as by improving in-building coverage for residents who have limited mobility. If something happens and somebody has a cellphone next to them, they can actually make a phone call from inside a building and actually connect and talk to somebody, or, or, or connect wirelessly. All of that is important and meets that objective as well. So, in conclusion, I respectfully request that you approve our, our application, because the application meets the special review requirements found in the city zoning code, the permitted, the proposed use is permitted within the CB zone, the proposal meets or exceeds all measurable standards of the zone, it is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and in fact, is a less intensive use than the existing uses that are there now. We have already received approval from the Federal Communications Commission, the FAA, NEPA, and the State Historical Preservation Office, which did, required us to do an extensive study to make sure there were no cultural resources that were being damaged or destroyed by the installation of our facility. This will also provide a benefit to the public by improving communications in this portion of the town. And while we were at the planning commission meeting, I had two of the adjacent property owners speak in support of this app, this application, and I also provided a, an email to city zoning from the railroad, expressing support as well, another adjacent property owner to the east. What I would like you to consider is this. Viero would be willing to make compromises, just as we did with the, the tower on the east end of town, and the tower on the west side of town. We want to be part of the community and part of the discussion. And so what we would like you to consider is, if you cannot see to approve a lattice-type tower, we would propose that you consider this as a monopole tower as well. We would consider lessening the height from 120 feet to 90 feet. 120 feet is our optimal location, our optimal height. And that height also allows us the ability to offer colocation for up to two additional carriers. We can still meet our objectives by dropping the tower to 90 feet. However, we will, as a trade-off, lose the ability to provide colocation for probably one carrier. This may also force another carrier to build another tower, or need to build another tower in another portion somewhere near this part of town. I call these compromises because as we, we understand that you are concerned about the aesthetics to the southern court, southern gateway to the, to the city, and we want to work with you and see what we can do to come up with something that works for both of us. But as with every, every compromise, there's something's got to give and something's got to take. If we lower the tower and make it a monopole, we are going to have less options for colocation. That's just a physical fact. We would also entertain the idea of installing solid fencing around the facility. By, by law, we would still be required to provide barbed wire on top, as part of our requirements, but we could change the chain-link fence to a solid wood fence, or a wood, or another solid fence of some other material. I would throw that out as all of the things that, if any of these, or all of these, are acceptable to the city, we would be able to make that work and make this facility work and still have it be a viable site for us. And with that, I'll leave you with this. This is a photo simulation of what the 90-foot-tall monopole tower would look like. And if you can look, let's see if I can get my, here we go. There's the monopole. We are south of, I think it's County Road Eight, which runs right over here in front of the gas station. This is essentially the southern, southern boundary of those, of the city limits. Here's the CDOT tower right here. This is another tower way off in the distance, and this was superimposed into the photograph, is approximately where we believe the tower would be at the correct height with the kind of equipment we would see on it initially. I want to give you an idea of what that would look like, as opposed to the lattice-type tower, which would, would, would have which would appear more bulky from this perspective, and also would be essentially 30 feet taller, which is about a third taller than what you see there. So with that, I give that to you as food for thought, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about our application, what we can do, what we might be able to do.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Counsel, does anyone have questions of Mr. Gonzalez? Counselor...
What's the height of the tower over by Walmart now on the west end of town?
That one is 150-foot-tall monopole.
Another question. Is there any impact to low-flying aircraft with these things at that height?
That's the reason why we... One of the things that I talked to Don Kosklin about when we met on-site was he wanted to make sure that we got FAA approval, Federal Aviation Administration approval, before we made our application. He didn't want us to go through this whole application process and basically get at the other end and have the FAA come back and say, "Guess what, guys, 120's not going to work. If you want to make this work, it's got to be 40," or something like that, and all of a sudden, it's an unviable project. So we went through and got approval from the FAA first. They approved this at this height, at 120 feet with no light, saying that it would not be a hazard to air navigation in the area. And I've got a copy of that letter if you'd like to see it.
I was just going to ask you that about the lighting on top.
There is no requirement for lighting on top, and we have no desire whatsoever to provide a light on top.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Counselor Johnson?
Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for your time. Is this picture up here, is that the 120-foot tower? Is that what you said?
That's the 90-foot tower.
90-foot, okay.
This is what I would consider the smallest visual impact we could provide, and we could propose and still provide the coverage that we need.
Are you further north in this... My understanding and my idea, I even went and looked at it, I thought you were just about parallel with the tower from C dot.
Yeah.
Because this one looks shorter for a 90-foot tower, and that one's 85-foot. I just don't see...
And it's the perspective. Basically, what ends up happening is at this location, the C dot tower is actually closer to the camera.
Okay, it is.
Yeah, and so it looks... Because it's actually not straight across the street, it's to the south and to the west. And so when you take the photo from this perspective on 285, the C dot tower is quite a bit closer to the camera than where the proposed tower would be. And so when you take the perspective into account, it appears that it looks a little bit shorter.
Okay. Another question. As you said earlier, we're going to start getting more and more requests for...
Absolutely.
...these towers. And it looks to me, when you did your coverage area, that you were sparse in both in the outlying areas when you did the alternate.
Let me get back to this one here?
That one, and then when you click it over to the alternate.
There?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it looks like you're increasing some coverage, losing some coverage either way you go. Looks like downtown area, you're having some issues with coverage.
Absolutely. I'm looking for another site.
And that is my question.
I am currently looking for another site near north of downtown.
This photograph, to cover our town, you need at least four more towers.
Well, let's put it this way. I'll leave that up to the engineers, because I'm not an engineer and I don't want to be an engineer. But I can tell you that we are trying to provide coverage to residences and businesses, and we're trying to get the biggest bang for our buck. So we're trying to get our tower located in areas where we can do that. So with this particular location, you can see that if we move it to the east, yeah, to the west, what the area that we end up losing, right in here, these are all residences. And that's where the in-building coverage is most important. That's where people make their phone calls. They're sitting at the dining room table, making the phone call and surfing the internet. That's where we want to provide that coverage. And so you're right. I mean, you see that hole north of downtown. I'm looking for a place to fill that hole, absolutely.
Okay.
And that's all I've been told to do for right now. You're right, I may get orders to find sites in other parts of town as well to help fill other holes, but that's all I can speak to right now.
And then we're talking about increased use in electronic equipment, cellphones, laptops. Smartphones are the big issue. The more, if I understood you correctly, the more of those units that are in that certain area, the less area you can cover. So if you...
In a general sort of way, that's correct.
If you had 100 more people in that zone, your zone would shrink somewhat if you're using internet coverage?
The capacity of the tower could get maxed out at certain times, absolutely. And that's the reason why I say this is not going to be the first application to come, the last application to come before you. Other carriers are going to be looking at the same issues that they have, because they've got coverage here as well.
And one more question, and right along that lines. I don't know how you work together with, but historically in our area, how is the mix with other carriers?
I think if you were to look at some of the cell towers that we have in the area, what you'll see is a lot of equipment on all the towers. And basically, that's us, as Pat mentioned in Planning Commission, that's us playing nice with each other. In other words, sharing infrastructure. We will make this tower available for co-location, and so if we do get a carrier that shows interest, we'll work with them and see if we can come to some agreement. But, yeah. And please, one of the other things that I need you to kind of expand your mind about, it's not just cellphones and tablets and cars that are connected. Pretty soon, we're going to start having appliances that are connected. And I've heard this from industry experts, where your refrigerator's about to go out and it's going to have a cell connection, and it's going to connect and call up the local HVAC guy, check and make sure that he's got it in stock, and somebody's going to call you and say, "Your refrigerator's about to go out, and we've got the part in stock. Would you like us to replace it?" And it's not just that. It's home security systems are going completely wireless. More and more folks are dropping their landlines and going 100% wireless with their own home phones. It's a snowballing effect, and we're just at the start.
And I guess that's my concern, is when are we... We're never going to hit an end. Are we going to have to have cell towers on top of each other to bag-fill all of this stuff coming our direction? And I know you can't answer that.
I, yeah, I can't.
But just a general statement on that. I think I had one more, but you answered a bunch of them through your presentation. Thanks for your presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Gregel?
Yes, can the city put up the one picture there that shows that tower? How we...
I've got control of the photos. Which one would you want to see?
The one the city had.
The one the city had?
Right there.
Oh, that one?
Yeah.
I don't... Who produced that? I hadn't seen that one.
That was through our Public Works Department.
Oh, okay, so...
That's visually what it looks like, what it's going to look like when you come into town.
It is, well, you know, it's red.
Not the thin one that you guys put in, but that's exactly what it's going to basically look like.
And Counselor, if I could, what I was showing you is if we were to compromise on height and type, that's what it would look like, is that reduced visual impact.
And I appreciate your efforts. But just as Pat said, you know, we're trying hard to clean up all entrances into our community. And in fact, if you go up the street further there, the county's building, some nice buildings there, we put a new National Guard in there, and stuff like that. You know, this area here, it seems like anytime something wants to go in there, they want to do it halfway, you know? Like you said, put buildings up, put barbed wire up and stuff like that. We're trying to clean up the area, and I don't know if you had an opportunity to speak to any of those business people up in that area?
No, I didn't.
Because they have struggled all through their tenure there in cleaning up the area. Because before, it used to be pretty bad, and they have cleaned it up. So I had an opportunity to visit with them, and someone said they wouldn't even contest it because of the people that own that property. But if they didn't own that property, they would be here, tenfold here against this, you know, against this tower. And it's hard, and I appreciate the fact that you're trying to put now a monopole, but do you have barbed wire over at the other one coming in west?
I don't think so. I don't even think we've got a fence up yet on that one.
So then why do we have to put barbed wire here? Is it because of the area or...
No, it's...
See, stuff like that, it seems that it directs that kind of action, and I don't think that's right. We're trying to put this as one city, one community, you know? And stuff like that, that's what bothers me, you know? The buildings that you're going to put in there, just metal buildings? Are you going to put something nice stucco buildings in there?
It's what I would call a... It's a terracotta, which actually looks like, if you can imagine, kind of a stone pebble finish on the outside, kind of a light brown. But it's not stucco, and it's not metal. I think it's a very nice... Sometimes you see driveways that are made out of this kind of material where it's exposed aggregate. That's, if you're in the construction biz, that's kind of what it looks like. It's small pebbles, probably about that big, that cover all of the outside of the building.
And out of respect for this residence right there, the guy that has that small... It's his residence, even though he's running a small business, you know?
I understand.
To have barbed wire and metal building right next to his, that his house has been handed down from generation to generation, I don't think it's right, and it's not fair, you know?
If, you know, if the approval for this tower is a restriction or a prohibition for barbed wire, we'll make it work. We'll do what we have to do to make that happen.
But stuff like that, you know, those people, they don't come on speaker, they tell us, you know? And I don't know if you had an opportunity to speak to that guy that has that little mechanic shop there.
No, I haven't.
And that's going to be, that's going to be your next-door neighbor. That guy would be, should have been the first guy you should have talked to, to see what kind of, you know? But stuff like that, it's always bypassed for some reason. And we're trying to put a stop to that. At least I am. And it's not my area, it's Mike's area, but, you know, it's an area where, like I said, we're trying to clean up. It's in the future, it's going to, as we continue to grow, we've got two brand-new schools in that area. We're going to have a lot of properties coming in there, you know? So we need to clean it up, and, you know, it's going to be where we can't stop you guys, you know? You're going to eventually come in. But if you come in, we're going to do it right, you know? And make it look, make it look blend in there, you know? Even if it costs a little bit more money or what. But I think it's only right for the people that have already been there and have cleaned up their businesses and stuff, and the residents that remain there, that's a hard deal for them.
And what I would like to tell you is that we understand that. And what I'm trying to explain is that I think we will clean up the area by developing the site as a cell tower. And we would be more than happy to work with the city if you have suggestions as to how we might fence this off with a different kind of material. We'd be more than open to looking at that. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to be part of the community and do what we can to help make this blend in as best we can. And if barbed wire is out, what I'll tell you right now is we'll make that work. If you want us to consider something other than a wood fence, I will run it by the powers that be at our company, and we'll see what we can do. I don't want to make any promises I can't keep, but I can tell you this, that we will work with you as best we can. We do have certain limitations because we are licensed by so many different federal agencies. We do have to make sure that we are in compliance with all of their requirements, but we'll make it work however we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gregel. Counselor Veale?
Yes. By chance, do you know what percentage of cell users in Alamosa use Viero?
I have no clue. I think we have a pretty significant share of the market, but I don't know what that number is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Veale. Counselor Stefano?
I have another comment. On the existing building in front of the tower, just picture if that building is eradicated sometime, all you're going to see is the tower. This business has been struggling a lot. They've tried several restaurants in that building. If it ever becomes leveled, all you're going to see is the tower coming in right there, right in front of you.
I understand that, and the only thing that I can say is that the application before you, you need to take into consideration that the building is there. There's a lot of things that could happen on that corner between now and who knows when. The building could go down, there could be a skyscraper that's built there. You know, I don't know what the potentials are. So, yeah, there's a lot of what-ifs. There's an infinite number of what-ifs. But the application right before you, right now, that building is acting as part of the shield for the base of that tower, absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, can you go back to your map of the coverage areas?
Sure. If you can toggle back.
Have you taken into account all the county buildings to the south? How does the coverage in that area? I think that's way down in the southern part.
The county... I'm trying to remember based off this map, because this map isn't really an aerial photo. It just shows the roads. But I think the county buildings to the south are going to be outside of our in-building coverage. So we, you know, that might be something that we look at in the future. Now, keep in mind, we're not always talking about towers. We don't always have to look at a tower to be able to meet these needs. Sometimes we can mount antennas on buildings, like we did at the hospital. We have antennas on the top of the hospital, which helped tremendously with in-building coverage at the hospital and also at the university. And so, you know, as we start looking at areas like the county building to the south, and I didn't know that that other building was an armory, that's interesting. But those, you know, as, and typically, these new modern armories, they rely a lot on cell communications. And so if it turns out that in the future, it looks like we've got a hole in coverage or we're losing customers because we can't provide coverage down there, then somebody's going to call me up and say, "Look for either another tower site or a building-mounted site, something that maybe is a little bit less intrusive." But we're going to see more cell sites, but don't confuse cell site with tower. It's not always the same thing. And this particular location, at this particular, for this particular need, a tower is the best solution for what we're trying to accomplish there.
And is three carriers the most you could put on a 150-foot tower?
It depends on the weight of the equipment that they plan on putting and how much equipment they want to put on there. To give you an example, for Viero, we typically like to have an antenna array and two microwave dishes as a bare minimum coming into a tower site. Sometimes we only have one if we're not worried. One is the main dish, and another one is called a redundant dish, and it's basically in place just in case something happens with the main dish, we can maintain that connection and automatically switch to the lower dish. That's something that we do, that's an internal thing within Viero. We want to try to maintain that, like I mentioned before, that 99.999% uptime. And one of the ways that we can do that is through redundant systems. So a lot of times, what we will have is an antenna array and two satellite, or two microwave dishes on a tower. If another, let's say another carrier comes in and says, "Well, we want to put up an antenna array, and we also want to put up five microwave dishes." Well, guess what? We're going to probably end with just two carriers on that particular tower because those extra five dishes are probably going to push us close to maximum capacity. We may have somebody that comes in that just wants to put two-way radio communications on there. Guess what? Those are really light. We can put a lot of those guys on our tower. We might have four or five of those kind of carriers on there. It just depends on the physical limitations of the tower and what it is that the carrier wants to put on there.
Have you tried partnering with other carriers on a project like this to maximize the use of a tower?
We typically own and operate our own towers. The main reason for that is that we have our own in-house foundation crews. We have our own in-house erection crews. These guys put up only one brand of tower, and they know how to do our towers, and they do them right. And that's the reason why we like to build and operate our own towers, because we know that we have complete control over it from start to finish. So, and to answer your question, we partner with other carriers by allowing them to co-locate on our towers. That's how we partner with them. And that's how we also maintain, we, you know, we've got, gosh, system-wide, probably over 650 towers. Been in business since 1991, we've never had a tower failure, and we've actually had some towers hit by tornadoes. That's part of the reason why we want to control that, that portion of it.
Well, I appreciate you compromising in some of the areas, but I think we need to work further on more compromises. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gillespie. Councilor Johnson?
Couple more questions came about by the discussion. Uh, when you guys do your presentations, it looks like typically you wanna go with the lattice instead of the mono. Is there a reason for that? Does it accommodate more partners on the tower?
The, the lattice tower is, is more stable in, in all directions. If you can kind of imagine, we're a microwave-based network and what that means is that when somebody makes a phone call off of the, a, a tower here in Alamosa, it goes to that tower and then it goes via a microwave beam all the way on every single tower we've got, all the way to Fort Morgan. In Fort Morgan, we've got what's called a switch. The switch then distributes that phone call to the landlines and the nationwide network. And then when somebody responds, it comes back to that switch, it comes along the microwave network all the way back. We have some of these microwave shots are twenty-five, thirty miles, eighteen miles. And so, if you can kind of imagine, you're trying to shoot a microwave eighteen miles, how much does that tower need to move for it to completely miss that tower eighteen miles away? Not very much. A three-legged lattice-type tower is very stable. We can, it's stable twisting and in bending. What we have with a, with a monopole is that it has a tendency to move in more directions. And so, we like to use those where they're closer to the microwave shots that we're gonna be using. And that's the reason why we can offer this as an option. We prefer the three-legged ones because they are more sta- more stable.
Go ahead. My name is Bob Hurstecore and I'm the Director of Site Acquisition for Viero. To further answer that question, the reason we would like a, a self-support tower is because it's designed to allow different locations on the tower for co-location because you have the grid work and you can attach it. On a, uh, monopole tower, you have to pretty much put the holes into it at the beginning. So, it's designed for the number of carriers and after that, there's nothing much you can do. Um, whereas in a lattice tower, they can add on corrections at a later point in time to increase the strength of the tower.
So you can get more partners on a lattice-type tower?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, my next question is height. It, it seems like height is a big advantage. The higher you can get, the better coverage you can get, correct? Or is that not true?
Go ahead. Yes and no. In today's world, uh, what we're finding is, uh, in highly congested areas, you actually need more towers, but they can be at a lower height. The reason we came in with a hundred and twenty-foot tower here was to eliminate having to probably build one or two other towers going south towards Stanford, Sanford because of interconnectivity to make sure they would have it. By dropping it down to ninety, we're gonna probably have to put another tower someplace in the county on the way down there. So, that's the reason for the height. The reason for having multiple, uh, lower towers is because of the increased data usage and the ability to then continually spawn that usage out. Um, I know Alamosa is in Denver, but, uh, we've heard that there's a plan in Denver right now by AT&amp;T to add an additional three hundred towers in the city of Denver. And if you've been there, there's already a tower almost every block. And it's because of the usage and what people wanna do that, you know, it's kind of forced the hand. I mean, believe me, the tower's not cheap.
And my last question, just to be clear, the building will be outside the fence or inside the fence?
The, uh, the equipment building will be inside the fence. The fence has to include, enclose all of our improvements. So it'll, it will enclose, include, enclose the building, the emergency generator and the propane tank, as well as the tower base as well.
Thank you. And true, up on what Mr. Gillespie said, we appreciate your ability to work with us and filter through these problems. We appreciate you doing that. In the past, I have this feeling we're, we're gonna need that partnership and working together again. We can look at towers in our corridors and say, "We have those and that's why we don't want them." Uh, you know, we have them in every corridor and we don't want tower upon tower in our corridor. And I think you can appreciate that, so I think we just need to continue to work together. Thank you for your time.
And, and what I'd, what I'd like to say is, we understand that you, as a city council, are not tower experts. And that's the reason why I would say that we would like to work with you to see if we can come up with a solution that works for the city and works for Viero as well. And we're very willing to do that.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Uh, Councilor Stefano?
One more quick question. Uh, is it my understanding that if your competitor Verizon wanted to buy space on your tower, you would allow that?
I'll let my boss answer that.
Yes, we have another, uh, company that actually rents out tower space and there's a national market for it and we do co-locate on it. In fact, there's a tower that's outside of La Vida, has someone else's equipment on it. I'm not sure whose it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Stefano. Um, you talked about our vision statement.
Yes, sir.
Every person on this council has a vision. And the vision that we see is, uh, our school system over in that area that is new. The county buildings that are on the south that are new. And, uh, when we look at that, we see a vision of a community that is growing. And when I look at this cell tower, I look at something that's just gonna be built to plug a hole. I see, uh, the potential for more area if this, if you had two different towers over by the, uh, new county buildings, which are going up as we speak, a potential for a new jail there as well, that the county's working on. Uh, as well as the new, uh, school who has, uh, we've got sites that are just being built upon at a fairly fast rate over in that area. So the potential for towers on either side, uh, and, uh, south of the proposed location, I think is something that really needs to be considered, considering the fact that you're gonna put, I don't know how many more cell towers in Alamosa, not only you, but everybody else. Now, we don't have our IT director here who can tell us how many possible towers might go in here. But as a governing body, I think we have a responsibility to our constituents to make sure that the entrances to our community are not only cle- clean, but offer a view of the sky. Instead of just, "There's a cell tower." Yeah, there is a cell tower. It's great. We've got great communication here. But it's something that detracts from the viability of a community. That's my statement. Um, I really believe that, uh, the possibility for other sites would probably do you well within the next five or ten years, if this industry continues to grow the way it is. Council?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, thank you for your presentation. I'm curious, um, when it comes to the citizens of Alamosa, how many people, could you give us a number about how many people would benefit from this tower being put in that location as far as to increase of speed, uh, access to the internet, or what have you?
Any number that I would be, give, would, would give you right now would be a wild guess. Um, if, if that is something that's important to you, I can see if that number could be generated by our technical people. I'm not sure. Uh, but I can look into it, but anything I would tell you would be just a wild guess.
Yeah, that number, number would be helpful.
Again, you know, how many potential customers are there in, in Alamosa? Uh, you could count every citizen. Part of the in-building coverage is the ability to provide that higher-speed internet, which, uh, the 4G coverage works in such a way that the more people that get on it, the area that it covers actually shrinks. It's part of the technology. Uh, it's just the way it is. Um, but again, uh, there's a limited amount. We are bringing fiber into places so that we have enough capacity for the internet. Uh, that's why we were able to provide, uh, the hospital in town, uh, fiber connections so that they had a backup for when the, uh, Quest or AT&amp;T, I forgot who it was, uh, they were having problems with it. We're bringing the, uh, internet in through our microwave, which gives a bigger pipe and allows that excess capacity. All over northeast Colorado, we are establishing sites at high schools where we are helping bring in internet and higher-speed data into the schools. But it's not possible without the infrastructure, and that's what we're trying to build.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Councilor Coleman. Uh, Councilor Gregel?
Yeah. I, I just wanna echo what the rest of the councilmen have said, that, uh, we're here to work together and try to do something great, you know, for, it's a win-win situation for yourselves and for us also, you know? And, uh, tonight, I'm not ready to make a decision myself. I'd like maybe send this back to staff and, and put together something. You talked about, uh, the monopole, you talked about, uh, the, the buildings, a wood fence, without the, uh, uh, barbed wire and stuff. See what something like that would look like. And that, and we talked about maybe even thirty days on this, but that's what, what the direction the council wants to go. Mayor, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Uh, Councilor Vehil?
Yeah, I would have to agree with Charlie. I think it'd be in our best interest to send it back to staff and see if we can get some, uh, some pictures and what would it look like with a monopole and different types of buildings, that type of stuff.
Thank you, Councilor Vehil. Um, Council, we, uh, we have recommendations from the Planning Commission, from our Public Works Director. We've heard from, uh, Viero representatives. Uh, what are your wishes? Eric?
You know, I, I had a question for Pat that didn't get addressed in his presentation. Um, and that is, Pat, did you explore with Viero or with anybody else, uh, alternate sites that might fit within that circle? I forget what they call it, the, the-
Proposed-
Circle of desirability?
I did not explore with Viero itself. I made a couple of more possible owners within the circle.
Were they, so the railroad was receptive to, uh, talking about a tower located on their right-of-way. What about the other landowners?
They were all receptive. Like I said, they were not, those discussions were not made. It wasn't being admitted at all, but it was being, it was just to see if they had called around, to see if anybody would. And everybody I spoke with, uh, only tonight, he was certainly entertained, entertained that idea.
You say one of them is here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Who's that?
Danny.
Okay.
Dan Russell.
Thank you, Eric. Is there any further follow-up from staff?
I have a question for Eric, if you don't mind. Eric?
Councilor Coleman?
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, especially if we're gonna vote on something tonight. Um-
If, if I might interrupt, I'm sorry.
Wait.
I, I, I do know that one of the adjacent property owners is here and would like to speak on, uh, on this item, if, if you wouldn't mind hearing from him before you make a motion. Is that, is that permitted?
Um, for a citizen to come up?
He's an adjacent property owner.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, so there's no right to do that, but if council wanted to listen, that would be fine.
Uh, we'll hold off on that. Councilor, uh-
Yeah, I'm okay.
Coleman?
I'm fine with it. Um-
Councilor Johnson? Okay. Did you have a question?
Yes, I had a question for Eric before we vote. I just wanted to be clear. Uh, this vote that we're making, uh, if we say no, are we saying no permanently or we're just saying not now?
Well, I suppose it depends on how you say it, but, um, you, you have to make a decision. I'll, I'll read what the, uh, ordinance says. Within thirty days after receiving the Planning Commission recommendation, which was what, last week? Last Wednesday?
Yes, believe it.
So within, within thirty days from last Wednesday, uh, city council shall either grant the application in whole or in part with or without modifications, or deny the application, and then transmit that decision in writing. So you can, um, you can, I heard discussion about sending it back to staff to talk with Viero more about what some of these modifications might look like. And if you're still within that thirty-day window, you can, uh, you can take that up at your next council meeting, which would be within that thirty-day window. Um, or you can vote to deny this application, which doesn't necess- doesn't mean you're denying Viero any right to put a tower anywhere in their circle of, of, uh, of desirability. You're denying them to put it where this application wants it, in the way that this application wants it, and start over essentially. So those are kind of your two options, or you can grant it.
Okay. The reason I, I asked that question is because I think, um, initially, I, I wasn't under the interpretation that, uh, Viero was, uh, willing to compromise in any way, but it seems like they're willing to compromise. So I just wanted to know what options we have available. Uh, and I wanted to know, from your, uh, legal standpoint, are they falling within the rules of, um, the city's, um, guidelines as they stand right now?
Um, well, yes, in, in the, the city's ordinances say that in a commercial business zone, this is a type of use that can be allowed by special review. So this is a use that can be allowed by special review if council determines that the conditions are met. And, and as, as Mr. Gonzalez, I think, so well pointed out, the issue is really before you is, is a difference of opinion between, uh, Planning Commission and staff and Viero right now about whether or not that condition of, is this, um, consistent with the, is it compatible with surrounding land uses and the area of its location? And, uh, staff and Planning Commission thought not, Viero thinks it is, and they demonstrated the reasons. That's the determination you have to meet. So it's not a, do they meet Chekhov's criteria? It, we're to the point of, are they compatible or not?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Coleman. Councilor Johnson?
Eric, another question for Eric. This isn't the only thing on the agenda tonight that's gonna involve cell towers. Uh, if we, try not to move ahead too much on this, but if we approve the second item, uh, doing more regu- regulatory things and we're shut off, we'll do a moratorium until November thirtieth. So, we could basically be making a vote next council meeting to yes or no these guys and then break our moratorium. How is that gonna all look?
Well, it doesn't break your moratorium. This application is pending before the moratorium is enacted, so you've gotta deal with this application.
So if we go beyond the thirty days and give a reply that we're working this out, is that sufficient? And how does that look with the moratorium, if we do the mor- I'm assuming, or what?
The moratorium only deals with new applications, so if you're still dealing with this application-
We're good.
The moratorium is irrelevant to that. If you go beyond the thirty days, I would say you can only do that with the agreement of the applicant, because you've got an ordinance that says you're gonna make your decision within thirty days. There's federal, uh, law that says you have to act reasonably quickly on applications that are brought before you. So if, you know, if you think that more time than between now and the next meeting is helpful and the applicant agrees that that's something that they would, you know, work out, then, then you can do that. Otherwise, you gotta make your decision at the next meeting.
Okay. I just want everybody to be clear on the two different issues and how they're gonna overlap. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Gregel?
One, one question for Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, the fourteen days, would that be a, a deal-breaker or, uh, or you guys wouldn't, wouldn't come back to Alamosa anymore or?
Whether you approve this or not, I'm coming back to Alamosa a lot. Uh, yeah, fourteen days is not a deal-breaker.
Thank you.
But I, I, I restate what I said two or three times earlier. We're willing to work with the city and try and come up with a compromise that works for everyone.
Thank you, Councilor Gregel. Council? Counsel? Mr. Romero? Did you want to say a few words?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please come forward, identify yourself and your address, please, for the record. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Frankie J. Romero, 1014 State Avenue, Alamos, Colorado. I am one of the adjacent property owners to where you want to put up the tower, and myself and my dad do not see no problem with it going up. I've listened to your side and Mr. Gonzalez's side, and they're both very interesting. The first thing it would do is take away that blight, because by putting up a chain-link fence, eliminating all them weeds, the construction of the old house that was there, by putting up a chain-link fence would be the best idea, because they have slats. You can put slats through it, any color slat you want. I would stay with the terrain, kind of a sandy color or something, or green. Mr. Stefano said, if that building falls down, that's the first thing you're going to see when you come into Alamosa, is the tower. Well, you've got the chavises living there, then that other house that's vacant. Mr. Gregel said the lobatos live here, it'd be right next to them. Well, they don't own that adjacent lot. The people that own it are in La Hara, the Gallegos, so it'd be thirty feet, they're thirty feet by a hundred foot long is what the lots are. My dad and I own the rest of it from the highway to the alley. We own that. I don't have no problem with them using our land or whatever if they need to get in due construction. But as far as you say, Mr. Mayor, ugly, actually it would clean that block, that section up, especially with that fence, then you wouldn't see the lobatos' house, because that fence would block that. Now, that would keep that eyesore out. People ain't going to come into town and go, wow, look at that ugly tower. They're going to drive right by it. Now, the new county buildings, the National Guard, they'll look at that first and say, that's nice. They won't even recognize the tower. They won't even see the tower there. So I'm all in favor for it, and I know what y'all got to go through, but I'm in favor of them putting that south tower up, because say we do get some type of business that comes in and needs, needs more south power or whatever, and it's a big industrial business out that way, say, well, we ain't got no south service, let's go to Colorado Springs, Pueblo. We just lost five thousand jobs. Our council just lost five thousand jobs. So I'm all in favor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Romero. I appreciate it, and I did not say ugly.
Mr. Romero?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Which, which one exactly is your?
We own from the highway to the alley.
Is that on the map there?
Yes, sir. It's the triangle, it's the, it's the triangle, it's that right there.
The very point?
Yes, it's the pie shape. We own that and half the alley. It's not a through alley. The city, way back, the city couldn't, we couldn't go a through alley because it comes out, so back in the days, the owners that owned it, it's half ours and half on this side. Hosted or owns that part. Whoever owns property there, it goes to that. And I was with the state the other day, the state's got fifty-three feet from the center line, they're three feet on our property, which is our right-of-way. Mr. Pat was talking about too close to the highway. Well, the Viero one is fifty-three, it's a hundred and two feet back from the road. The one on this highway will be actually a hundred and seven feet. So it's further back. You know, it's further back from the highway than the one on, going out on 160. Yes, there is a lot of traffic, more traffic on 160 than there is on 285, so.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. We appreciate it. Counsel, it looks like we've kind of beat this thing to death almost. What are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the proposal, and the proposal is for the installation of a hundred-and-twenty-foot-tall, open lattice-style communication tower. And based on that, I'm going to move that we deny the request, and I do hope that they go back and work with staff and get something figured out, but based on the, on the proposed style and height of the tower, I move that we deny the request.
Given your questioning of me earlier, I just want to make clear something that maybe I didn't. So if you deny this request, rather than saying, all right, we're not going to approve or deny right now, we want staff to go work with these guys for two weeks, if you deny this request and then later in this meeting approve the moratorium, they'll have to come back with a new application, which would be barred by the moratorium, if the moratorium's enacted.
Yes.
Until it expires.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Once again, clarification. I just want to make sure before, I'm not for sure if I'm out of order or not, but once again, I'm not clear, so I'm not going to move forward unless I'm clear with this.
We can have discussion after the second, please, counsel. Do I have a second to Counsel Johnson's motion?
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion, please.
Thank you. I think most of us probably in agreement with Charlie, when we're saying that we probably should let them go back to staff and see if there's something that they can work out instead of just basically denying them this permit at this time. So I guess that's what I'm trying to relate to council at this time, to get your feedback, to see how you feel, and if that's your thoughts right now.
Counselor Coleman, I totally agree with you. I think we need to send it back and have them put together the, like I said, the monopole and the wood fence or whatever, and show us what exactly, how it would look, you know. I'm not in for denying it. You know, eventually, something's going to go up, you know, and so I think if by denying this, it's only going to cost them more time, because once this moratorium comes in and just as our attorney said, they're going to have to go through the whole new process, and I don't think we're here to stop people like that. We need to work, we said we were going to work with them, so I would probably be voting against this motion here.
I understand, and I understand what we're talking about, and I understand denying this request. The request was for this particular tower, and I don't think I'm excited about that. And what the next issue, the next issue with cell towers is coming up, we're going to try to make these things even across the board for everyone. So I think that solves that issue. We're going to make the decision on that, how tall, what type of towers we want, and this tower, I hope they come back and propose a tower that will work for them and fit in the regulations that we come up with. And I don't know, the moratorium would go till November 30th, and I would hope that staff would push it through quicker if we could get that done quicker, but I don't know if three and a half, four months would kill this project for them or not, but I would like to see. It feels like we got caught. We should have done this earlier after the last tower thing we went through. We should have set some regulations. We're doing that now, and I would like to see this tower fall under our new regulations. That's.
Counselor Johnson, in listening to Mr. Gonzalez, he's willing to make those changes and make it a workable deal. And by denying this, I don't think it gives them that opportunity to do those, and I'm not one for saying, hey, deny, on that basis, because they're making the efforts to go ahead and more so blend it into that area and that, so that's where I'm coming from. I'm not in for denying, so.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Thank you, Counselor Gregel. One parting observation that I have is that the beautification of our entrances is something that's subjective, and that if, if and whatever tower goes in on that location, it will be visible to everyone. So I have a motion and a second to deny the application. Please start voting, counsel. Is anyone else voting? Or? Do I have seven? Kristi?
The motion does not pass. Five to two with Mayor Lucero and Counselor Johnson voting yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Mayor, if I can ask, add something here, and I don't know if we need a motion for this, but to send it back to staff and have Viero work with staff and put together something that, with the effects that, how this building's going to look and how it's going to fit, just almost like what they did out here, West Town. Once we finally got those pictures in and we knew exactly what it was going to look like, it was more, it was easier to vote on it, so.
Thank you.
I don't know if you need a motion to that effect, or just direction.
I think we need a, do we need a?
What do you think, Eric?
A motion on that? Eric?
I think a motion would be helpful.
I think that's your motion, isn't it?
Well, I'll go ahead and make that motion, that we go ahead and have staff work with Mr. Gonzalez and his crew and put together something and bring it back for our next council meeting, so that we can.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to refer this issue back to staff to work with Viero and possibly come up with certain alternatives for that, for that, I guess, particular site and that particular tower. Start voting, please.
Motion passes six to one with Counselor Johnson voting no.
Thank you very much, counsel. Let me get myself together here, and we will move on to Resolution Number 10, 2014, annexation petition by Stacy Foot. Is this our Public Works Department, or is this you, Eric?
This is Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
This is a classic example of being caught between a rock and a hard place. Ms. Foot would like to subdivide her property to create another, a saleable building lot at the east end of Leroy Avenue. She can't do it because half of her property is in the county and half of it is in the city. So before she can get all of her property under one jurisdiction to do the subdivision, she has to annex. So this resolution is simply a resolution, finding the petition substantially compliant. It in no way obligates the city to annex the property. It just, it just starts the clock ticking on the process.
So, Pat, this is just basically a resolution to accept the petition?
Correct.
Period. Thank you. Have any questions of Pat's counsel?
Yeah. Pat, on this drawing, on the map that you supplied for us, where exactly is the levee, and where's the spot that they can build a residence? It looks like the levee's right behind that.
The levee is right on the western edge of that triangle.
Okay.
That's, that's the, that's the existing city limit, so basically what they have to do is annex a bunch of river bottom. They're annexing the levee and the river bottom. The property to the west, if you look just, just west of the southernmost corner of the triangle, there's a house, that's, that's the old Foot home itself. What they want to do is, after they annex, they will, they will subdivide that property into two pieces and create a new building site north of the existing home.
So am I right in saying that there's trees on that location on the levee, or right in the vicinity?
It's, it's actually pretty bare.
Okay. So I'm, the levee's way different than what I'm seeing in my picture. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Gillespie?
So where will the access be for that new residence?
Leroy Street.
Is that the one that Foot's on now?
Yes.
So it will continue on?
Well, Foot access is from Leroy, they come in and turn to the south. If you, it's, it's right up there tucked in north of the Irving residence.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And this will help the sewage situation?
Yes. I'd love to get some more flow in that line.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Diego?
This is a first step in the annexation process?
Yes, sir.
And if that's the case, I'll make the motion that we pass Resolution Number 10, 2014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting on Resolution Number 10, 2014. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is City Clerk and Municipal Court. We have a first reading on Ordinance Number 10, 2014, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County for conduct of the November 4, 2014, coordinated election for a special improvement district. This is Eric, or is it our city clerk?
We didn't talk about who wanted to do this, so I'll, I'll talk at you. This is standard procedure for the conduct of the election. This election will have one ballot issue, as you know, it's for the Carroll subdivision SID. It will be presented only to qualified electors of the SID, so those who either reside in or who or whose spouse own property within that SID, and that's, I think there are thirty-two lots in there, and so the county has determined that the easiest way to do that is to just provide separate ballots to those people as part of the coordinated election, so that's what will happen with this agreement.
Thank you, Eric. Counsel, we've obviously had quite a bit of time on this issue. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Coleman?
Eric, I just want to be clear on the, on the cost. So it looks like we're not going to really have to worry about any cost. It'd either be paid by the participants or Mr. Van Rye if it, if we move forward, right?
Correct. The estimated cost is a thousand dollars, which if the election is successful, will be covered by the bond that's to be issued. If it is unsuccessful, there's an agreement with Mr. Van Rye, who's, who made the petition for the formation of the SID, that he will cover those costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Gillespie?
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion. A motion we approve on first reading, Ordinance Number 10, 2014, and ordinance approving an IGA with Alamosa County for conduct of the November 4, 2014 coordinated election.
Second. We need a, we need a public hearing?
Yeah.
Set it for a public hearing on Wednesday, August 20th, 2014, or soon thereafter is appropriate.
I'll second that. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have City Manager in Legal, a public hearing on Ordinance Number 9, 2014, and ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium to the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any new special-use applications for the operation of telecommunications facilities within the city of Alamosa until after November 30th, 2014, and declaring the city's intention to consider the development of appropriate regulations for the issuance of such permits. Eric?
I really don't have much to add to the discussion we had when this ordinance was brought up on first reading, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Eric. If there's no further comment, I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance Number 9, 2014. Is there anyone here to speak for or against Ordinance Number 9, 2014? Seeing none, I will bring it back, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a decision. Counselor Gregel?
Go ahead, Mr. Vehil. Did you have a question? Because I was going to make a motion.
Eric, will we be having work sessions to discuss the criteria that would come with this?
Yes, we talked about scheduling one of those, and I think, did we set one for September 10th, maybe?
Yes, September 10th at 6:00.
Thank you.
That'll be with, with, uh, council and planning commission jointly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if there's no further questions, uh, I'll make the motion we approve ordinance number nine, 2014.
I'll second.
I'll have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Start voting, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. we have committee reports. Anyone have committee reports?
I have one. Um, I met with the San Luis Valley Development Resources Group, and they're having some pretty good success in what they're trying to do is promote economic development, uh, not only in Alamosa, but also throughout the San Luis Valley. And I just wrote down a couple notes. Um, they were able to help, uh, two different businesses. One business in, uh, Alamosa, by helping that business with a loan, they were able to retain at least eight jobs, and they have hopes of, um, adding two additional jobs here in Alamosa. Another business they helped in the San Luis Valley, uh, they're hopeful that they're going to be able to create seven new jobs. So, whenever there are new jobs created in the San Luis Valley and in Alamosa, it benefits our city greatly as well. So, I just wanted to, uh, commend the San Luis Valley Development Resource Group for the, um, good work that they did this past month.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Coleman. That is, that is some good news. Bringing jobs to Alamosa is great economic development. Thank you for that. Counselor Viero?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I went to the Alamosa School Board meeting on Monday, and, um, Representative Ed Viero, uh, presented Ms. Bana Apodaca, uh, a senior who just graduated from Alamosa High School with a $3,000 scholarship. Uh, she'll be attending Colorado College. Um, so, it's really awesome. It's really good news. Um, Jerry Reed, former teacher at Alamosa High School, uh, and a couple former students of his have, uh, really, uh, taken off with the Alamosa Alumni Association. They have a, um, website, and within the next few weeks, you'll be able to, uh, click on that website through the Alamosa School District, uh, page. Uh, so, if you want more information from him, uh, you should just contact Jerry Reed. He's on Facebook, that type of stuff. Um, and he wants a lot of people who graduated from Alamosa to get involved. Uh, they have a bunch of events coming up, especially for homecoming. And another good news from the high school is that they, as I mentioned before, they're working with Adam State, uh, in developing concurrent and dual enrollment classes for the students there. Uh, they have about four or five different classes that they can offer their students this upcoming year that will count for college credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Viero. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, uh, the Golf Report, uh, the Kayler Memorial Golf Tournament is this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It is the biggest golf tournament of the year. I spoke with John Atencio today, and they have ninety-five entered for the tournament as of now. At least forty of the golfers are from out of town, so this is very good for the motels and restaurants. Uh, this year, the majority of the money will go to the club, whereas in the past, half of the entry fee went to the pro shop and a great portion went to the restaurant operator. This year, with the golf club operating the pro shop and the restaurant, a greater portion of the entry money will end up with the club. This will greatly improve the financial outlook. Uh, the restaurant is doing more business, uh, and plans to have a grand opening soon after this tournament. Robbie Jackson, superintendent of the grounds crew, has done a great job getting the greens ready for the tournament this year. Uh, the greens look excellent. The recent rains have, uh, couldn't have come at a better time. The course is nice and, uh, should be for some good golf. Uh, this has reduced the amount of water that we used on the golf course, and hopefully the weather will be nice for the weekend tournament. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Anyone else have a committee report? If not, we'll go on to staff announcements. Amanda?
Um, I do have something. Does anybody else have anything? Um, I'll let Heinz go.
Thank you. Thank you, Heinz.
Just let, make sure everybody knows that we have a public forum tomorrow night at the rec center, uh, from 6:00 to 8:00, uh, discussions on the ice rink boards, the need for the replacement, um, staff's, uh, probably going for the Goco grant to, because it's gonna be a sizable amount of money to replace those, and maybe also the collar. So, welcome anybody to, has input to come on over to the rec center. Also, an update on tennis courts. The, um, the contractor did a site visit, uh, the last week of July, said no problems, uh, in his mind of completing the project. The contract is with him to be signed. Uh, he's, he's spoken with me about, uh, having supplies delivered the last two weeks of August, and that he will be starting the first week of September at Boyd. Complete that one and then move over to Carroll.
Thank you, thank you, Heinz.
Fifteen above. For the, for the daytime, that's. I think he wants to start, work on Boyd. That's what, I'm letting him decide what she wants to do first, so, get that done.
I just hope we have time to manage both.
I mean, I expect two weeks and that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Viero?
Heinz, do you have an update on the dog park?
No, that'll come up again at the rec board meeting on the 14th. Uh, um, my recommendation will be the site by Lee Fields for the first one, and then for next year, work on the one that's on the north side by the Kettles Golf Club.
Thank you, Heinz.
Thank you, Counselor Viero. Thank you, Heinz.
You're welcome.
Amanda?
Um, you guys all just got passed out the, um, 2013 in-kind spreadsheet that we have, um, during our council retreat. You asked that we, um, put this back together again this year so you can see what, um, services that the city has provided to, or what resources we've provided to, um, our city partners. So, it goes through and does the same way that it did last year, um, lists all of the different, um, events that we have. Um, you'll see that it's color quoted so that you can see what items are Parks and Rec, um, what items are Police Department, what items are Fire. Um, so, this goes through and it shows what, um, staff time, it includes staff time for planning, setup, cleaning, the use of city equipment such as trash containers, city stage, vehicles. Um, so, all of these items add up to what, um, the city of Alamosa puts into each of these, um, in an in-kind basis. Um, in 2013, we put in a total of just under $89,000. So, now that we're going into our budget season as well, and we start getting, um, some of the requests from our partners, we can, um, have this part of our, our decision-making as well to show that, um, outside of just the cash that we give them, we also give them a, a pretty good amount of city in-kind for, as our resources.
Thank you very much, Amanda. Counselor Viero?
Thank you for supplying this with, to us. Uh, do you think we could get this to the paper?
Absolutely. I have extra copies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Viero. Counselor Coleman?
I was just gonna add to it. Um, I, this is very helpful, and I think this is very good because the community and our citizens need to know exactly that we're doing, going over and beyond what's required of us in many cases, um, making sure that these funds are going out to help the community in several different areas. Uh, will this be available on the internet as well? Or can we put this on the internet or not?
We can probably see if it's something that we can add to, um, our forums online.
Okay, thank you so much for preparing this.
Thank you very much, Counselor Coleman. Uh, thank you, Amanda. This is great information, especially not, like you said, going into the budget season. Um, anyone else have a staff announcement? Chief, got anything to say?
I have nothing.
Thank you for being here, chief. Um, all right. Well, with that, we'll move on to council comment. I know you're all itching to talk. Beat the heat barbecue, uh, I think was a great success. I, anybody attend?
I did.
I, I walked through for a couple of minutes and it seemed like it was going great. How was it? Ty?
Well, I was there Friday before they really got it kicked off, uh, but it looked like they had quite a few vendors who were out there, and that was impressive. Whenever we can have new vendors come into town, uh, I can't stress enough, and you all know I'm passionate about economic development, it just helps the overall community because we have more people staying in hotels, more people spending money downtown. And the more that money circulates, the more it keeps jobs here in Alamosa. So, I was just glad to see so many vendors out there, and that's a good thing.
And thank you for being there, Counselor Coleman.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have a comment? Um, all right. If not, uh, we will move on. Tonight, we have a need for an executive session. I will entertain a motion.
I guess I'll go ahead and make that motion. I'll make the motion that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24 dash 6 dash 402 in parentheses 4, in parentheses F, to discuss personnel matters relating to the city manager's evaluation.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, uh, please start voting.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, uh, counsel. And, uh, for the purposes of the, uh, the press, uh, once we get out of executive session, we will not be discussing any more regular business. We will be adjourning. Thank you.